Our regular council meeting April twenty eighth, twenty sixteen. If you would please rise for invocation and place in the line. Dear the Father, we thank you for this day, for all that you've done for us. We thank you for the opportunity to gather here tonight to discuss the city's business. We pray that you would give us wisdom and provide guidance on each and every issue. Lord, we pray for wisdom. We pray that everything said and done would be to move this city forward. We've heard a couple of special prayer requests tonight. We want to lift up Jack Jordan to you as well as Judge Arvin Rodgill. And, Lord, we pray that you would put your healing hand upon them and ultimately, Lord, or that your will would be done. Again, guide us as we go through this meeting, that everything said and done would be to honor you. Yes, thanks for praying, Jesus.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the Father, who is the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
I will remind everyone, if you were not here during the agenda session, we've had an equipment malfunction, so our little handheld recorder is not working, so we will be relying on the video from which to get our minutes. So please do speak up, make sure your microphone's on, speak clearly into the microphone. Quick, have the roll call, please.
Mayor Lambert.
Here.
Vice Mayor Garrett.
Here.
Councilmember Cale.
Here.
Councilmember Manning.
Here.
Councilmember Stoll.
Here.
And for City Manager Williams. Senior Attorney General.
Allison Baker. Are there anyone, a trustee who had opportunity to review the minutes from the April fourteenth work session, as well as the April fourteenth agenda work session, the April fourteenth regular council meeting, and also the March twenty sixteen financial report? These items are in the consent agenda. We will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion to approve and a second. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Councilmember Cale.
Yes.
And Councilmember Manning.
I have to stay on that because I was saying I had to leave, but I didn't stay on it.
Councilmember Stoll.
Yes.
Mayor Lambert.
I'll stop for just a minute and grab our little sign-in sheet here, like I saw someone Mr. City, Mr. James City, four twenty-three Pine Bluff Drive. You'll come forward to the, one of the two microphones here in the front. You will have five minutes.
Okay, as you said, I'm James City. I live at four twenty-three Pine Bluff Drive. I'm a lifetime resident of East Ridge. I own several pieces of property in East Ridge. At this time, could I approach the council with some pictures?
I'll pass it this way and then I can come back this way. Here's as if it is a piece of property that is pretty overgrown.
Yes, it is, and why are we waiting this half? That's, that's my question. I have, I have the duplexes, they are four. Same person owns. The person has plenty of money. And there are private houses, two that I own. How can I get anybody decent to rent these apartments of mine the way I keep them compared to the neighbors they have to look at every day? But this didn't happen overnight. And the city, the inspector should pick up on this thing. And East Ridge is an aging city. And the codes, we're gonna have to enforce them more, be more strict about them. I know we don't want to come down, but these landowners, property owners, they're responsible for these pieces of property. And if our city don't start enforcing these codes, we're gonna be another East Ridge. And I've got too much vested in East Ridge to not try to help this situation.
A couple of things. One is, I know that typically, a lot of residential code enforcement is gonna be complaint-driven. So, I don't know if we've received complaints, maybe we have, on, on this particular piece of property. Our fire marshal that's here, he's also over the codes department, and I'll, I'll let him speak more to that.
Okay, now, there have been several complaints to the city of East Ridge. The grass has been knocked down at all these locations. And especially the one on Biddy. Now, this has been going on for several years. And, you know, it's a shame, I own two pieces of commercial property. Just few houses down from me. And this doesn't have to have to be on my places at all.
And I do know that, I'm sure this is a frustrating situation for you, certainly we, we can appreciate that. I do know our code enforcement department is, is stretched very thin, thankfully. We added a position just about six weeks ago. That person has been hired and is off the job. And we, we have other, frankly, personnel shortages that, that need to be addressed. But I, I think the situation would get better.
Well, God has got to, it's going downhill full steam. Especially the one on Biddy now. Can you tell me about the situation on Biddy? They condemned the house, they tore it down, but there's another one there that needs to be.
It's, it's actually part of the, the next process. I can't speak for all of the ones that are here, but I can tell you, one of the ones on Biddy wasn't condemnation, it was demo. This other one has come up, I'm pretty sure that it's vacant now. I don't know where they're at in that process. Our process does take a little bit of time to go through AHO. I can assure you that we have multiple cuts in the AHO monthly. Can't get them all in there, but I will definitely take all this information and I'll make sure that they, they're in the process to go in front of the ministry or house. A lot of the time what happens, not to interrupt you, but we send these violations out, especially on high grass, and then somebody comes out and cuts it. They dress it up, and then the next month they're dealing with the same thing. And then by the time you get the letters back out, they cut it again. And it's, and this is the time of year that we, we see this more often, of course, in the springtime, but I will be happy to address this with my staff.
And I understand what you're up against, okay? But the council, we've gotta come down on this street. We've got to. East Ridge means a lot to me. My great-grandfather was one of the first councilmen that held name in East Ridge. So, my roots go way back in East Ridge. And it makes a world to me. And it just really bothers me to see it going downhill like it's going downhill, you know, more, more than, than the financial part of it.
Well, and, and I, I understand, certainly there are some, some properties that the owners are allowing to go downhill. But I think, at the same time, we're seeing a lot of, a lot of progress made in, in relation to, I think, just the, the overall picture and on specific properties as well, that in the past have, have not been all that great, but they're, they're getting better. So, I think there's a mixture of both. Certainly, when we see things like this, we, we want to make it a priority to address any kind of.
It makes you just keep your place neat. I mean, it doesn't have to be a mansion, just as long as it's neat.
Right. Well, thank you very much for bringing this to us.
Thank you. Jimmy, are these duplexes on duty?
Yes.
Do you remember that girl that been in front of the council before I was here? Those properties, she does not rent those duplexes, they're just sitting there empty.
They've been empty.
They've been empty for years. Problem has been addressed, but it wasn't recovered true. Hanging out over State Highway, big flipping around. And she has other properties in East Ridge that have been addressed, so basically the same thing.
I think I recall this.
They have, they have.
Two or three years ago.
They have been empty over twenty years.
Yes.
So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. City was the only one who signed in, but certainly we did. Make some comments from, from anyone else here, a resident or business owner here in the city of East Ridge. If you have a comment, question, or concern you'd like to break to the council, this would be your opportunity to do so. If you'll come forward, grab one of the microphones here at the front, and state your name and address for the record. You'll have five minutes. And please, please do speak close to the microphone. Again, we're trying to pick it up on the video back here.
Manning Lowery, eight nineteen Mount Bell Road Drive. Been a while, but I do watch every meeting I have, thank goodness for the video. This year, I'm back for the third year. I had a conversation with Mr. Martin earlier today. Last year, when I came to you all about putting recreational things for people my age over here at the community center, went through the list, we got porthole things made, but that was as far as we've been. Mr. Martin tells me that he ordered the equipment that you all approved, and that Mr. Hyatt said, cancel the orders. So, we still have nothing over here. We have older kids now hanging out over here at Pioneer Frontier. I think if we could just put up a pole with a backboard and a net over this parking lot that very few people use over by the, I mean, there used to be two goals over there for years and years and years, my kids played on them. I just, it doesn't cost that much. When I got prices last year, it was less than a thousand dollars to buy a whole bunch of stuff. And I just would like the council to address to somebody, let's go ahead and do it.
I think I recall worship pits, and things that are pretty simple.
Yeah, shuffleboard even, because you get these portable things that you can even use and take up if you don't want them out here around. But I really need somebody on the council to push this, because you even said you'd play badminton with me last year, but we still can't, unless I bring my set.
Well, well, I think, I think we need to, we need to address that. We did talk about that, we did.
It's thirty years.
Right, and we did, but specifically, last year, we, we made plans to definitively do it, and I'm not sure what the circumstances were or why the order was canceled. But, but we can certainly do something about that this year.
That's all I have to say.
Thank you, ma'am. Saw me a couple of weeks ago at the new ballpark at six o'clock in the morning. We had a good conversation then. All right. Do we have anyone else?
Francis Pope, nineteen thirteen Coast Road. I was here two weeks ago. I expressed my concerns about you gentlemen following the charter. That's my first point tonight. I will stay after you until you do it and you do it right. You have, right now, one of the biggest decisions coming before you immediately. That is hiring the city manager. First and foremost, gentlemen, go by the charter. If you have no choice, you go by the charter. Couple of questions that have arisen in my mind with tonight's agenda. Resolution twenty-two sixty, with the salary adjustments, if you get a degree, I see one little flaw in that. On the, to attain this, number two says satisfactory performance evaluation for at least three years. It's my understanding that we've got some employees that have never had a performance evaluation. That's policy, gentlemen, that's not day-to-day operations. I think y'all were supposed to have a meeting on personnel ordinance and get a personal, personnel handbook going. These performance reviews are on the handbook. They don't happen. They need to happen, not just for this program, but because it's policy, you gentlemen said, gentlemen before you have said. My next question is on the item of property at Camp Jordan that is being rezoned. They're on.
Camp Jordan.
Parkway. That is the property that we sold to developers a couple of years ago for a little less than thirteen thousand, correct?
And it was in that neighborhood, yes.
Yes. It was my understanding at the time we sold that, that that was undeveloped property. It was basically gonna be used for runoff, flood mitigation. How now, couple of years later, is some of it gonna be able to be developed? I'm a little confused.
I think what the, and this was talked about in the planning commission meeting last time, most of that property will be for a retention pond. And the part of it will be actually, even though it is a floodway, you can build a building on it, you can put pavement, parking lot on it, and so, I think, a very small portion of it can be used for some parking.
But we're not looking at having a building placed on that at this point.
There's a small portion that is a wetland. There's a small portion of the south side of that that is a wetland, which we have to buy wetland credits and, or working in the process to do that, but there's a floodway line that cuts, I'm just, we're standing there, I'm just, you can't fill anything below the floodway, and that's why ninety-five percent of this is just, you can't fill into the state, not let you fill the floodway. There is a small portion that we're buying wetland credits and going to fill or use for parking up there, but it's just that small bit. But to do that, it's gonna be some.
So, even though it is gonna be part of the development, we're not looking at buildings put on any of that eleven acres.
On any of the eleven acres. I can't tell you, Francis, nobody, it depends on who comes there, if they wanted to be backed up in the very back, and there's a portion of that that a building could sit on, the corner of that building could sit on. I can't tell you that nobody can ever be there, if they wanted to be in the very back, sure.
How much of that eleven acres do you think is gonna be able to keep developed?
Acre, acre and a half.
An acre, acre and a half.
Yeah, but I mean, it's after seventeen feet of fills put on it, model, eighty thousand dollars for a reager of wetland that you have to take it off. So, yeah, it's a tough piece of.
Because that was confusing, like I say. I was here when it was purchased and it was, we can't develop on it, and now all of a sudden it's being rezoned and talking about developing on.
One thing that we did was had the floodway, at that point, that entire piece of property, all the acres was in the floodway, and you can't fill anything on the floodway. We had had a floodway study done, and the civil engineer said, we can move the floodway line. It's off my far left, but it did move it a little bit, and I think what I did here didn't have to do so. I think that was accurate.
So, circumstances are a little different than they were then.
The floodway line's moved, the wetland is not. The wetland is still.
Thank you. My other question and concern comes with the Chattanooga Football Club authority contract. Some time back, there was a conversation among you gentlemen and Mr. Mark, who's in town, about use of Camp Jordan. There was some question about, you can't deny anybody from coming in and using it. It was purchased with grant money. It must be open to everyone. If that's the case, how can we have a non-compete exclusive contract where, and I'm having a question against the Chattanooga Football Club, I'm just trying to clear up in my mind some things that were said before, and they seem to have changed now. If grant money requires that that's open to everyone, how can we sign a contract that says we will not let another select soccer come in and rent fields if they want to?
I think, a couple of things. One, and anyone who has more knowledge on this than I do, certainly you could speak up, but number one, I know that conversation was had in relation to the grant that we had applied for and received from the state, the hundred thousand dollars, the local parks regulation thing. I know that had some, some strings, that basically wherever it is we built that facility, it had to be open twenty-four hours on rest. As far as these particular fields go, I don't know if that applies to the entire park. A, B, I think you could apply that technically to, to almost any time we rent a facility to someone. If we rent a facility, if we rent the arena to a group or the amphitheater to a group, you know, if that was the case, then you could make the argument, we can't do that, because we're, we're saying, for these days, you, you can't come on the amphitheater unless you're associated with this particular group. Memorial Hospital comes out and does a picnic in the spring. So, if we were in the amphitheater at Memorial Hospital, then, then, there is some prohibition from us being able to do that, and, and we shouldn't be able to even do that. So, I don't think it applies to the entire facility, in terms of you have to have every, every part of this camp, of Camp Jordan, available to anyone at any time. I think there are limitations in there.
But if Memorial Hospital rents the amphitheater, there is no contract that says Erlanger Hospital can't rent it a month later. So, there is no non-compete exclusive, and that's what I'm seeing in this contract. Maybe I misunderstood the contract. And whenever, what I heard about the grants was when Vice Mayor Garrett had asked about East Ridge citizens and how many children play out there, it became a good, big conversation about, he was gonna try to stop people from East Brainerd and Georgia coming in, and you can't do that, because it was federal money and state money put into that property, and it's open to everyone. If, is that the case, or can we carve out little places that are not open to everyone? This says that, as I understand it, that the city would not allow another select soccer academy to come in and rent any of the fields at Camp Jordan. I'm just questioning, which way is it? Can we be exclusive, or does it have to be open to everyone?
Well, I, I think, I think it absolutely can be exclusive. I mean, if we had our own select soccer program, we wouldn't want anybody else coming in to compete against us if, if we had our own program there. So, and, and we joined in twenty fourteen, we, we essentially merged with the Chattanooga Football Club and said, this is gonna be the select academy. This is gonna be our select soccer. So, I don't think there's anything that prohibits us from being able to do that.
Larry was gonna say something?
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. Hey, James, we talked to Ms. Pope for a little while the other night, that was a good conversation to, and it's good to be able to catch up. Hope to have a seat in a while. Do we have anyone else? Okay, we will move on to communication from council members. Started earlier with Mr. Manning, so this time I'll start with Mr. Cale.
Yes, sir, I do. After the last council meeting on Friday morning the next day, I get a phone call starting us violating the city charter. Not the way we selected and not being on the, to be chose from, but, well, I don't want to investigate like I promised the lady I would do. Lady questioned, and I don't mind telling you, is Miss Miller. Fight the states and the fight we got back from them cats, they were questioning for three years. Supervision, okay? But Miss Miller had worked under this wafer for ten years as administrative assistant. So, I looked up administrative assistant with the dictionary. Number one says act of process of administration. Number two, term of office. Number three, official directing and managing. Okay, I looked up manage, manage, and managing. Number one is supervised. Number two is control. Number three is control, contrived to succeed. Number three, I looked up directing. Okay? Number one in the dictionary says straight. Number two is straightforward. Number three is number of mechanics. Number four is faithful to original, originals. Number five is guide. Number six is supervised. Okay? Or command. Number seven is tricks. So, with these definitions, I feel like that we have not violated the charter by allowing Miss Miller to stay on selection. So, I promised the lady I would do a little bit of detective, that, that is my intention. I don't feel like we are violating charter.
Thank you, sir.
And, I've got a little something about the soccer that this Pope has brought up. We do have East Ridge Football Club. We do have two select teams that play there. I kinda object to the point that we have a recreational league that we promote and sponsor. What if any of these other recreation teams, one or two of them get together and make it a select team, go along with the other two select teams that are already in East Ridge? According to this, we can't do that, which I personally think is wrong. I plan to, our select teams, most of the state leagues that are playing in our East Ridge Football Club, ought to be able to go under that, what they call it, select academy program, which we have two teams already here playing in East Ridge. That's all I have answered her question, that's what I think about that. I've got other questions, but it does sound.
Okay. Mr. Garrett?
Yeah, I have something. I would like for, and I know Chief Williams isn't here tonight, but I would like for him to set up a dress code for, uh, well, let's just set up a dress code. You know, I, I attended an event recently where the city personnel were there, and they should be dressing professionally, not dressing to go out on a night of dancing or partying. These employees represent the city. They're paid to represent the city. I think they should be representing the city in a professional manner. So, I would like for him to take a look at the dress code for employees.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Do you have anything?
That's it.
Okay.
Mr. Stoll? I have a little more to bring up. It's been my attention that we've got a paint machine, pay thirty-two thousand eight hundred seventy-six dollars for, and now they can't use it right now because they don't have a, a truck that they can put it on. They've got it in the budget, uh, this budget coming up, but they're now, right now it's in the paint system, and they can like go ahead and try to get the truck that they, they put this paint machine in, in the loop, they're gonna take the whole truck and put it in it, but they need another truck. So, once it's, the paint machine's in there, it's in there, it don't come out. And they might say, that's the only thing they've been. And they might say, that's the only thing they've asked for in their budget this year.
I thought that's what they were going to do with the other truck, whether they got this nice new truck, would take that truck and hang it down in the paint machine in it, because Mr. Aggie and I had that discussion.
Well, since then, I think the truck, whatever trucks they're going to use, they're going to need it.
Well, there's a truck standing down at the Recreation Park, it's a three-quarter ton shed light. I understand there's nothing on it that was transmissioned. They had it priced to have it fixed, it was costing a thousand dollars to have a transmission that it did. And all this will be used for is to put that paint machine in, set it, drive it, and take the lot apart. So I'd like to see us spend a thousand dollars to repair that shed light truck down. It's a three-quarter ton, instead of purchasing a new one.
Is Mr. Hage here, you represent, will come up?
The truck that we're talking about is, I know the long wheel base truck down there, I'm not sure it's a three-quarter ton, it may be.
The break that's at the garage?
Yeah. Well, the issue, when this comes out of this, I am, is that we're speaking with Mr. Highten about this. Our current traffic truck that we use is a two thousand and two model, which is going to be fifteen years old. It is still relatively good condition, and the plan was to purchase a paint machine, convert that whole truck, this truck, into a flatbed, which we're going to sell as utility bed on gov deals. I've spoken with Byron, who said it would be a little bit of a challenge to do that because he's done that with other trucks in the city. To convert the, to just actually replace the truck that we use every day. That truck has a hundred and forty thousand miles on it, I don't know how many hours. So, but it is still a usable truck. It's three-quarter ton that you handle, the paint machine, the barrels of paint, and the utility that you need to drive with it. That's how this all come up. So we'll get you a truck and we'll convert over to that strapping equipment over our old truck. All right, I see what you're saying about that, but that truck, I don't want it to be converted into an office or working within a bed. We were going to try to let this as a talent system to work with.
These different outside expansion, you're going to take?
I understand. But we're going to be dealing with just considerable amount of weight as far as with our two burden, two barrels of paint. I'll show you the...
The three-quarter ton truck, what happened?
Well, that, like I said, it's just, the bottom line is, is do we want to invest in buying the traffic control, a new truck to work with every day? How many years do you expect to get out of a service truck? I mean, fifteen years to me, on the road every day's been pretty good. So somewhere along the way, you have to replace it.
Fifteen years that you've had a new truck?
Yes, two thousand and two.
The one you drive?
No, the one I drive is a F-150 short wheelbase. It's not a three-quarter ton truck.
Why don't you say that?
It's a two thousand and twelve. But that's not, I'm talking about the truck that we run parts and run sign work with, the one you're seeing running down the road every day, working. It's a, like I said, it's the plan we tried to come up with for a couple of years, actually finally have a way to strip these streets. You get complaints on it every day, but we can just do what we can do when we got it. But we can certainly look into what your plans are.
What model's that gray truck?
I don't know. Just at the garage, and when I live there, they have this hundred thousand miles on it. And we use it to take the motorcycles back to four miles.
This is what I'm trying to do, trying to convert our own service truck to an actual paint truck. Because we wanted to load it and unload it out of there. That's an example of the strapping system that we want to set up that's sitting in the four shop.
Thank you. Another question. What kind of funds do we have in the...
Now, I see what you're asking about the...
The replacement fund? That's, may not be something you can just recall offhand.
Well, we're slowly building it back up.
Okay.
We also have the option, if we're going to throw, for it to be held to be used for space for East Ridge, to be stretched through that.
That's kind of an example of the change, that's kind of what we're trying to install. The plan, that's going to go back to the way that actually came with the catalog suggesting how to set vision out. I know we've always had to make things work, to make things work. With our, with the replacing, the service truck that we use every day that we have used for, like I said, fifteen years, the truck, that is still a usable truck, a three-quarter ton body, minimal expense, we can convert that over because we can sell pieces of that on gov deals, pay it in a black bed. Bottom line is, when you deem it's time to replace the service truck. It's got a truck every single day, I understand. Jack says, I as a supervisor have a truck, but it's a two-hundred coming in, it's a F-150 short wheelbase truck. When we try to bring the paint machine there, I'll be having a truck. In some way, I figure I try to provide the service, I guess that's one of the...
Only problem, the way I look at the, the way you got it, you're all up, you know, where you can use that truck, you got that all equipped in?
Well, the pain's after.
Yeah.
Pain, they need to deliver it on your hands, you know, like a mess.
They need to screw it up.
How do you, and this, to what we're, this is the type of service truck that we want to sit for our sign work. It's just a, it's just a, it's been a serious service that we use all of our sign parts, signal parts, everything that we need to go on job, we have to carry with us in this truck, this truck. That's everything we need to do. And we run the same trucks since two thousand and two. It's made as a testament, like it lasts as long as we have it.
And I'd like your additions on the campaign board going after a long...
Yeah, I mean, it's got twelve hundred parts of failure, it's a hundred and forty thousand miles in it, it's got, how many hours is the car idle during the day? Magnify that, our time's fourteen, fifteen years. So somewhere along the way, you have to replace equipment. It's been a starved vet, hard fought battle through the years, all of our divisions, because we all have needs. Somewhere along the way, we just have to say please. Thank you. I'm just trying to give you a general idea of what's, what we're asking for.
Thank you, sir. Well, we, we need to advertise, we can have it on the next agenda. Make sure for, discuss, take action, however you want to do that.
Discuss, take action on next week.
Okay. It actually does need a motion or a settlement, so you can just request that it be on there and it'll be on there.
And I have spoken with both state law contractors down there. It seems like you get what I am here for.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Silk, did you have anything else?
Uh, no, this time, sir.
Okay. Senior Day is tomorrow at East Ridge High School, eight-thirty, I believe. And graduation, basically, now it's coming up. Saturday, May twenty-first, two P M. Tomorrow it starts at eight-thirty. We might be there. All right. I do want to mention one thing that we talked about in the agenda session as far as item of business that will be added. It's a follow-up to the discussion had at the last council meeting. Mr. Boyd was here talking about a cell tower that's been proposed for high school, to be built on the high school property. Ultimately, that is going to require a use over the department from the city. That's the final step in that process. Commissioner Boyd basically wants to know from us how we're comfortable proceeding. And I think, you know, they can, the county, the school system, they can work out whatever it is, work through all the process they've got to work through. Ultimately, it's going to come back to us. And he has made the proposal that he's going to ask that the money generated from the lease on that, and I think there's a one-time payment as well, that all of that money be used essentially to rebuild the football stadium. Johnny's a pretty good idea. So he's asked what our opinion would be of that. So if we could talk about that a little bit, again, that's item death, under due business. It does not commit us to doing anything in any way. He's simply asking for a little bit of guidance on what the city would like for him to do and the county commissioner to do. Apparently, that will be before them next week. That's why we need to talk about it tonight.
Well, I'd like to say happen on it. I'd like to write a note off and then write, saying that our money would come to the stadium to get some more else. I'd like to say that part of that.
That we could definitely have that extended when we talk about that item death, absolutely.
Mayor, did anybody statement that he was going to make the motion to the county to take that money to make payments on a bond issued, for them to issue a bond, go ahead and build a stadium and use that money to make the payments on it?
That money would serve as the bond, yes. Yes. So it would not be, it would not require any kind of financial output from the city at all. Again, our only involvement really is the fact that it's the school property, East Ridge High School is in the city of East Ridge.
Yeah, that's good.
All right, and I don't have anything else. Of course, Mike is at a conference, he'll be back tomorrow. I do understand that House sent the message to Mr. McVay earlier, I think he would like to speak to that.
There's been some discussion with respect to the administrative hearing officer and the violations, that he can hear the jurisdiction, that he has to hear certain violations. Mr. Hedrick has issued a order that he can hear violations of the zoning ordinance so long as they are commonly found in property violations, international property codes, property maintenance codes, building codes. Those would include violations of the sign ordinance that are contained within the zoning ordinance, they would include the open air flea market ordinances that we have contained in zoning ordinances. So Mr. Hedrick has ruled that he can't hear violations of those particular ordinance, even though they are inside of the zoning ordinance. There's challenges as to whether he can hear those particular violations, and he ruled that he has the authority, that decision could be appealed to the chance of recovery. In the meantime, our administrative hearing officer can't hear those, over those sentences.
Thank you, sir. All right, and with that, we will move into old business. First item is Resolution twenty-five sixty, item eight. I'll have to read the caption first. Resolution number twenty-five sixty, a resolution of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, adopting a schedule of salary adjustments based upon the attainment of an educational degree. This was table, I requested that this be table at the last meeting. Would like to remove that from the table, and I will make a motion with that effect. We have a second, I think we had two seconds, to remove this item from the table. We can have a roll call, please.
House Mayor Grabit?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Manning?
Yes.
Councilmember Silk?
Yes.
Yes. I would like to address the one thing that Ms. Pope brought up, and certainly, I don't want there to be any room for misinterpreting that, or, you know, if an employee qualifies otherwise but hasn't technically received a performance evaluation in the course of three years. I would like to amend that. And have that, have that read, have satisfactory performance evaluations for the last three years, strike or have satisfactory performance evaluations for the last three years, comma, for the duration of his or her time employed with the city of less than three years of the time of degree attainment, comma, or... Kind of thinking on the fly here, what could cover it? Were the absence of a performance evaluation, no disciplinary action had been taken against that employee? Yes, that would be, I amend it the form of a motion. Have a motion and a second? Roll call, please.
House Mayor Grabit?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Manning?
Yes.
Councilmember Silk?
Yes.
Fairly.
Yes.
Got a question, Chair?
Yes, sir.
All right. You're saying you're going to bring this up tonight, the Drive fifty-five, Governor Haslam, funding?
Yes, sir.
All right, the Chattanooga Region, Chattanooga Region is supporting this?
The Talent Dividend Initiative, yes, sir.
Are either one of these giving any kind of benefits or reimbursement, paying for part of it, or any...
They are not. There's no funding coming from...
Haslam's not giving that, Haslam's not free.
Well, as far as the, I thought you were referring to the salary adjustment, but there is money coming from somewhere else to create that.
I was talking about them getting their education paid for. Through the Haslam deal with the Chattanooga Region Talent Division.
The Chattanooga Region Talent Dividend Initiative is providing no funding whatsoever for the attainment of college degrees. They're not granting scholarships or grants or anything like that. It is, that is an initiative to encourage predominantly adult learners to go back and get post-secondary degree. And that falls in line with the Drive fifty-five challenge that Governor Haslam is, has come up with. If, I believe the statistics bear out this way, if everyone in high school, hundred percent graduation rate in the state of Tennessee, we still would not reach fifty-five percent by twenty twenty-five. It will require adult learners going back and getting a post-secondary degree. And so as a means of encouraging that, he has, he's done a couple of things. One, there is the Tennessee Reconnect Initiative, which encourages that. And then for our own employees here, I would like to encourage them to go back and seek that post-secondary degree, whether it be an associate's or bachelor's, master's, whatever it is. There's a direct correlation between degree attainment and the economy of your community. Can't remember the exact dollar figure, but for every, every one person that has a degree, it adds twelve thousand dollars to your local economy. It's something like that. Please don't quote me on that exact figure because, again, I don't know exactly what that figure is, I can't recall.
Can we get a bench for that, Mayor?
The things available through the state on an individual basis, it's for one person. If they want to go back and get an associate's degree, they would have to go through the state. What this would do for us is if we have an employee who is a semester short of getting their degree, this would provide encouragement and a really good reason to go back and finish that semester worth of work if they know they can get a two percent salary increase for attaining that degree. It does a couple of things. It helps the employee, but it also helps us, we've got an improved workforce.
Let me add, can I add another question to the matter?
Yes, my lord.
If this don't fit into that huge table, it don't fit into it. Sure, we've got some men and ladies, men has got a CDL license. We're going to have to get paid for their license. Would that, would that fall into that? They got CDL license, should do nothing, getting the salary paid?
It would, it would...
I'm sorry, go ahead. I believe if you look at the employee's pay scale, it has a line on the line items, it has CDL dropper, it has that on the, on the line.
Well, some of them do have, they're not going to salary. That's why, that's why I was asking, Mayor, we have... That's why, that's why I asked, Mayor Grabett.
That isn't related to this, but it's certainly something that can be addressed if it's not already addressed.
Our employees are supposed to go before this, Tennessee Reconnect will pay for it. That's what I mean.
Potentially.
Potentially.
Yeah, there's hoops they gotta jump through in order to be able to do that.
The Tennessee Reconnect and the Drive 55 are two different programs. For the Tennessee Reconnect, they have to have already gone to school and earned a certain number of hours. And then, for some reason, they didn't finish or something like that. I don't recall what those hours are or that requirements, but that's the Tennessee Reconnect. So, in my opinion, the Tennessee Reconnect or the Drive 55 really don't have an impact on it. This is strictly giving the employees an added additional salary for reaching these degree levels.
Yes, and that, by them reaching that degree level, it does support Governor Haslam's Drive 55.
Yes, it does, yes, it does.
They're getting a degree, and the goal is to have 55% of the population with a degree by 2025.
Yes.
Can you...
Can you change your motion? At the non-related, related out of it, just stick with the lower pay raise increases. What else, 25% or 24%?
And I mean, I can appreciate that, I would prefer to leave it the way it is. If someone works, let's say it's someone working in the fire department, and they are, and they're 15 credit hours short of a degree in history.
Engineer.
Yeah, whatever it might be, yeah. If it's a bachelor of science degree that they're 15 hours short of, I think you could certainly make the argument that's a related thing to their job, depending on what, exactly what field of study they're in. If it, again, is a history degree, probably not, but I think they should still get something, some kind of benefit for reaching even a history degree. Because, again, it does, it helps, it helps the local economy, it helps our workforce just to have that added layer of education.
That also means, that means all departments?
It would apply to all departments.
All right, and that thing about that, I appreciate you. Check into it, like I said, we've got some men that got CDL license, mayors and ladies got, I'd say being hand lakers. And could you check into it about them, where they brought up, they got the license, some people get paid CDL license, some people don't get the salary for it.
But is it their job prescription to have? I mean, you could have a CDL, they're leading their job.
But the job they're doing, they do, that's have a CDL license.
I think we could probably look at all of those things. I would like, as we go into the budget process, to do a little bit of review on salary levels in various places.
I appreciate that.
So, and I think that's a discussion that's worth having. No, we don't have to have a motion on that. All right, and I think where we left off, Janet, we have a motion and a second on the...
We want to vote on it.
On the amendment, we voted on the amendment. Okay, we've got to vote on the actual resolution itself as amended. I would move to adopt Resolution 2560 as amended.
Second.
The caption?
Caption.
Resolution of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, adopting a schedule of salary adjustments based upon attainment of an educational degree.
And the one amendment is on item two, to be considered the staff member must. And the amendment itself is in the absence of a performance evaluation, that no disciplinary action had been taken against that employee in the, in the last three years. There are no other questions, roll call, please.
House Mayor Grabett.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Manning.
Yes.
Councilmember Stoll.
Yes.
Mary Lee.
Yes. Item B, discuss, take action on board appointments. I have one appointment that I've not yet made, I have reached out and am just having difficulty contacting, so hopefully next time, I apologize for the delay on that one. We will move on to due business, item A, ordinance number 1006.
Ordinance number 1006, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, to amend ordinance number 989 titled, "In ordinance to provide revenue for the City of East Ridge, Tennessee for the fiscal year July 1, 2015 to June 3, 2016, appropriating the same payment of expenses from municipal government by changing the revenues of the general fund and grant fund and by changing expenditures of the general fund, grant fund, and DOJ federal forfeiture fund."
I have a question, Senator.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Down here in Doro Sotter. Said he was ready to budget at $53,500. And on this summer sheet over here, on this budget sheet, Doro Sotter came with $125,500. I'm wondering what this original budget is originally.
I believe $125,500 is the revenue. I'm gonna be, the amendment is to the expenditure.
Hundred minute.
Yeah, it's on the expenditure.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to table this. Reason why, I would like to have a description of what these items are going, what this money's going to be used for, rather than us having just a total here. Give us an idea on what it's going to be used for. So that is my motion.
A motion to table, we have a second.
May I still have some questions?
Yes, see.
I'll take the motion, thank you.
Okay.
Okay. 3314, State Law Enforcement Education. Says they budgeted $22,800. Says they had to use D. Back in October, we backed over to 2533, where we spent $18,000. For salary reform.
Okay, how, do you...
Yeah, we're, I think, we jumping back to the March 2016.
Are you talking about that?
I have to say.
I talked about this yesterday.
Okay.
All right, let me go back to that, not to the ordinance.
Which line item did you say it was?
3314.
Gotcha.
Back in October, we passed a resolution, 2523, to spend $18,000, showing up here that we have. Paid out, didn't they? I'm assuming that's what actually is, what was paid out. You better do.
Okay, State Law, okay, I'm sorry. We have paid that out, we have not received it back from the state yet. We don't give yet.
The government received it back from Fire Department.
Yes, the Fire Department, we always get back more rapidly. We, it may be June 30th or later before we get the law enforcement. Post takes it to the last minute. Last year, we got it back in, towards the end of July. And I'll go ahead and give it to them around Thanksgiving, and then I just have to wait for it to...
Well, I understand that, I just said we're doing it from Fire Department.
The Fire, the Fire comes in really fast.
Are there any other questions?
Say we have received any money for the loan?
No, I'm going to, I'm envoysing it all at my time.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to table. We have a roll call, please.
House Mayor Grabett.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle. Excuse me, Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Manning.
Yes.
Councilmember Stoll.
Yes.
Mary Lee.
Yes.
I wanted something real quick.
Go ahead.
Since we mentioned the loan, you know, they decreased what they were paying us. We've talked about this two or three years ago. They filed a lawsuit that, 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 on the loan. Put that somewhere down, too, I thought that, for this, they're not paying, surely, or few of them now, on loans.
I think that's a good idea. I think we... I think we also need to, I agree with that, but I think we also need to ask our state representative. He can do a little research for us to find out. What kind of funds would be available to, you know, to help beautify, that gateway? I think I've heard of a gateway enhancement grant in the past.
I will check on that, yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, it makes sense, I've said this before, we, East Ridge, if you're coming north on 75, we are the, obviously, the gateway to Tennessee. We're the front door for Hamilton County and for the Chattanooga area. The better we can make it look fair, the better off we are.
We might have talked to Ash Pope, he was supposed to see.
Who knows?
Again, if you don't mind, back on this ordinance 1006, I would like to have a line item expenditure on what that money's to be used for.
For example, in general government, where I'm asking for $2,000, $200,000 increase, that is actually to, there's been a lot more help required from the HRA, that does what that is.
Well, that's what I would like to know, is what that money's going to be used for. Thank you.
Mayor, I have something, nothing against Stoll up here, or anybody else up here. The House in the way of, have good wildfires, but they have no grass to cut, that can't work. Right now, they're looking beautiful down there now. Like I said, what we've done now, Jordan looks like hate.
Maybe we could strike a balance in there somewhere, where we don't have to, it doesn't have to be quite as labor intensive as it is now, but it's still...
I've already talked about, I think that's still what it's going to be. Go ahead, Matt.
Yes.
I didn't have it on the stage, but we should have a longer contract.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll move on to item B, ordinance number 1008. Ordinance number 1008, ordinance of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, to amend the zoning regulations and zoning map of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, to rezone the property located on Camp Jordan Parkway from R1 residential district to C1. Or is there any other question?
Make a motion, or a second.
A motion and a second to approve. Any comments, questions? Roll call, please.
House Mayor Grabett.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Manning.
Yes.
Councilmember Stoll.
Yes.
Mary Lee.
Yes.
Item C, Resolution 2561. Resolution number 2561, a resolution of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, adopting an extension of the field usage agreement previously entered into between the city and the Chattanooga Football Club Academy, CFCA. Make a motion, approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve, so we have a discussion, yes. Yes, sir.
Oh, hey, we're not going to start. First off, did we have a 2015 to 2016 contract?
It is, our contract ends on the last day of June.
Did we have a contract signed?
We did, for years. That was signed over two years ago.
One that I was given, run out of. Last year, it went from 15 to 16, it was from 14 to 15. That's when you rolled it up into October. That was the last contract that I was given until this. Here it is right here, term of this agreement shall be for one year, commencing on July 1, 2014, and the shell's power, June 30, 2015. So we have one from 15 to 16.
We had the option to roll it over into a second year.
And they, and they took that option and notified us, and we notified our north at that time.
I'd like to throw up a contract, it's opposite here.
Mr. Cagle, if you don't mind, while you're looking, do you mind if I go ahead?
No, sir, go ahead.
Oh, yes. You know, I won't work with the organization, I really do, but I'll be honest, we have problems with this contract. It appears to me that this contract is extremely one-sided. And let me give you some examples here. In the event the city requires use of fields for more than five Camp Jordan events during a given calendar year, the city shall pay $500 per day to CFCA, which shall be treated as rent offset to compensate CFCA for excessive loss of the fields. Here's one reason why I have a problem. We're maintaining the things. So, that's my one problem. Second thing, the city shall make reasonable efforts to reserve or allow CFCA to reserve sufficient parking spaces for its practices, training, games, and tournaments at the complex. I think that's, I think that sentence is a little ambiguous, because we have other against, there's also going on out there. Six. B, CFCA shall be entitled to charge parking during tournaments and retain all proceeds thereafter. Now, I'll come back to that here in just a minute. Line seven, CFCA shall invest a minimum of $15,000 a year in the complex to improve and maintain its condition. And there's point two, three, CFCA agrees that in each of those three years, $10,000 of said $15,000 will be designated towards the purchase of a zero-turn lawnmower each such year. Well, that lawnmower's going to be used on those fields, because we are responsible for maintaining the fields. Major field repairs consist of such items as turf enhancement, equipment purchases, soccer goals, benches, flags, and their repairs. City agrees to top dress each field once a year during the term. Mr. Martin, how much does it cost to top dress one field?
All of the toll would come to $8,000 a year. We top dress any year, every year where they live there or where they're not. We top dress any year, every year where they live there or whether or not.
Eight thousand dollars a year?
Yes, sir.
Paragraph nine, as part of the seat, uh, field use, C F C A will be utilizing city equipment at the complex, including soccer goals associated, uh, nets, anchors, sandbags, and etcetera. Uh, are we planning on buying any new equipment?
Yes, we will be, and they'll be assisting in that.
It doesn't say that in here.
That's of the fifteen thousand dollars, and they haven't agreed with Nike, and the other five thousand dollars that'll be used is the fact that they're changing the birth date, and which will change the age groups, and they're also changing, correct me if I'm wrong, Matt, they're changing the size goals, and they'll have to assist us in...
How much is all this new equipment cost?
At least we're spending, but you can catch that.
No, how much, how much does the city, how much does the city...
Of course, well, he can answer that back with the...
I mean, we've just ordered four sets of goals that will, uh, cover our two thousand sixteen, or two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen, fifteen thousand dollar requirement, and those four sets cost, cost fifteen thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars. Um, each set of goals...
Average it down to one.
Fifteen thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars for the goals, that include the shipping costs. Um, and so, each set of goals, when you average it out for shipping and everything else, comes out to a little under four thousand dollars per set. You have, you will have to have one set of goals for every field that is designated as a U twelve and younger field, um, and that's going to be a pretty expensive cost, because, and this is not, this is coming down from U S Soccer, which is a long and con- colluded trail, but if you want to be a part of their organization and register a recreation program, you also have to buy these goals, and that is our partnership with the city in helping buy these goals and reduce that cost.
Well, you're, you're going to pay for a zero-turn mower, years one, two, and three, that's ten thousand dollars per year. Um, the goals are going to cost fifteen thousand.
We just spent fifteen thousand for this past year, uh, and then we will slowly, we have a, a timeframe to get to where those goal standards are in place, um, but we will continue to contribute that additional five thousand towards buying those goals until we have the complex to where it needs to be to have proper-sized goals across the entire complex.
Okay, um, but it says here in, in, out of note, that as part of the field usage, C F C A will be utilizing city equipment. So, see, that's the hangup I'm having. If C F C A's paying for it, buying these goals...
They're not our goals, and we're, we're buying them as a part of our fifteen thousand dollar agreement, but they become property of the city, uh, within that fifteen thousand dollar allotment.
But, right now, you're going to put ten thousand dollars into a mower, you're buying fields for fifteen, that's the difference of five thousand, so you're going to be putting five thousand dollars into these goals, the city's going to be putting ten, correct?
You've already, he's already spent fifteen on the goals, that's already, already done.
That's for this year, the contract that we're under right now, that's already been spent. We're getting those in.
Okay, so that, the goals have nothing to do with this contract, then?
No, sir.
Moving forward, the, the plan was to, with ten thousand that would be dedicated towards the mower, the additional five thousand that was left over, that we would, we would use that money to continue to purchase the proper-sized goals to where the complex would have just proper-sized goals across the park. Currently, the only goals that the park owns, um, are the eleven V eleven, a full-size field size that we can use moving forward under the new standards.
As I said, I really want to work with you here today, but, right here, paragraph eleven, city agrees to perform all necessary maintenance on the fields and to keep them in good playing condition during the term of this agreement at its sole cost, the city's cost. Maintenance shall include mowing, weed removal, weed treatment prevention, aerating, fertilizing, top dressing, and pest control. Shall, uh, the city shall be responsible for the purchase and cost of all necessary field paint and ac- uh, paint application during the term of this agreement, and shall make the field paint and application equipment accessible to C F C A at all times for its use. You see what I'm saying? Uh, next paragraph, it continues with what the city's going to be responsible for. The city shall be responsible for all costs of the electricity and water required for the fields during the term. City shall also be responsible for light maintenance, bulb replacement, and irrigation system repairs and maintenance during the term. This, with what it's going to cost the city, I have some concerns with.
Well, this is a carryover of the same contract that we've been under for the last two years.
Okay.
And, um, we've never had any issue with it, and, uh, we've, we've worked together well with the city, and it's, again, the same contract we've been operating under for the last two years. The city's going to have these costs of taking care of the fields, mowing the fields, aerating the fields, whether we are out there or not.
How, how, how much rent do you pay the city right now?
It's forty thousand dollars per year, and then the additional fifteen thousand dollar investment.
Okay, let me continue on. Trash service, city shall be responsible for the placement of sufficient trash cans and removal and hauling off of trash from the complex on a weekly schedule during the I think that, you know, like I said, I want to work with you, but, but when we're giving you all of this, but yet you want to hit the city for five hundred dollars per day in the event we needed more than those five events that are listed in this contract for, per calendar year. I mean, I don't see that as...
I don't want to have that being struck from the contract to work with.
Yeah, and what we did because of life shift, too, I mean...
No, that's another, that, that would be, that would be another deal. Uh, well, we pretty well done on that, and I agree with what you're saying, and I don't think there's a problem, because we worked together on that anyway.
Has, has parking ever been an issue? I know that was one of the things.
No, no, parking's not an issue, uh, and, and they mentioned, when it was mentioned parking, the reason they charge for parking is because we don't have any kind of fences, partitions, or anything to keep anybody, so, like, this weekend, there's going to be, how many teams do you have total?
We have two hundred and fifteen teams coming to the area for, um, oh, go ahead. We have two hundred and fifteen teams coming to the area to play a part in the state city cup, a large portion of which will play out of Camp Jordan. In terms of the five hundred dollar offset, those sort of things, we've been there for two years, and we've never, ever come to the city and asked for anything for any events that are being played out of the park.
And you pay this table as a collection now?
Just a second. Chief, are we providing any type of security or anything if these games?
Well, the park officer will be on staff, and that will be, that will be it.
Thank you.
And he always down there, though? Is he always down there?
He, he's down there forever through the turnbogs, different, differently.
Okay.
Mr. Martin?
Yes?
He mentioned rollovers. Item sixteen's saying carrying over, that's the sign you're talking about, is the rollover?
Yes, item sixteen.
Oh, okay. Anyway, it says carrying over, I'm assuming that this is where you're saying, rollover? This, there should be no carrying over this term with this agreement, that expressed agreement nor any extension is a matter of law. Well, I don't remember it being brought from the council for the, the sixteen agreement.
I, I think, the way it was worded, we'd have to look at it to, to be sure, but I believe it was expressly mentioned in the contract before that there was, just as this says, there shall be no carrying over. I think it was expressly within the other contract that there would be a...
Carrying over.
The thirty days notice, we could renew it for...
Yes, we have thirty days.
What's it?
Here it is, uh, fourteen, fifteen, nine, sixteen, re- the same, so it must end at fourteen.
Where, but, Martin, can you say that one more time about the carrying over?
Certainly, by number sixteen, so that you know, carrying over from this contract. I don't have the three, this contract.
Here's the one, the back of fifteen, fourteen, fifteen, and the range aside. So, it wasn't brought from the council without a fifteen, sixteen contract.
How, how many months a year are you, you all under?
Uh, this is a ten-month agreement, we were previously under a twelve-month agreement, and the bulk of our usage occurs from mid-July until mid to late November, and then early February until late May. June and July, for about six weeks, is a kind of down period during the, the summer that we don't do as much. Uh, we may have a camp there from time to time, but the bulk of our usage occurs, um, through the fall and then through the spring. We did have practices occur during December and January in the past, but, uh, we felt like it would be better to move it to a ten-month event, because the majority of the damage done to fields occurs during December and January, because they're not in the growing season, and so, um, we felt like it was helpful to the city to, uh, keep this to a ten-month agreement at that point.
Mr. Martin, how much a year does it cost parking regs to maintain these fields?
I'd have to figure out the total amount, but we are able to maintain them and do other things with the money that they pay us. Able to, with that fifty-five thousand dollars, and we, we are able to maintain those fields and basically maintain our baseball fields as well.
And provide fertilizer?
Yes, sir.
Top dressing?
Yes, sir.
Paint?
Yes, sir.
Electricity, water?
All that, yes.
You're, you can do that?
Yes, sir.
And if you use five, five fields, correct?
That was, that was a good thing about it, and that was one of the things we were good about. Sir, I'm sorry.
You, you use five fields.
We're using five of the nine fields, and that's...
I think, I think another thing we've got to look at, too, is the people bringing it to the city, that's going to eat, set these restaurants.
Well, that's...
Set people's meals.
You definitely have a disposable income when you're talking about the people that are driving through the park and the people that will be coming this weekend, uh, even our, our normal participants, uh, that come in for practice, I mean, my family, we live in New York, but I spend more time in East Ridge probably than I do in New York. Uh, and we stop at a gas station or a restaurant or something invariably, and we are always coming through the city, and I think you multiply that by about six hundred families that are a part of our organization, and you can see that the impact that this service is making on the city as well.
I think something we tend to lose sight of as well, obviously, we have through the East Ridge Football Club our own recreational program, uh, our own recreational soccer. Uh, my son, well, he's in that, by the way, um, but...
He's got the best coach out there.
(laughing) I would agree with that, I would agree with that. Uh, it'll fit to the other coach. Uh, the, uh, our so, the select program, Chattanooga Football Club, it, it is, it is Chattanooga Football Club, it's not the East Ridge Football Club, but, at the same time, that is our select soccer. Our, our East Ridge kids play select soccer in the Chattanooga Football Club. This is, this is our league, I mean, if you want to look at it that way. Uh, this is, uh, their opportunity to participate, uh, it's like soccer, and the decision was made, correct me if I'm wrong, twenty fourteen, that in order to be, to raise the level of competition across the board, that if you consolidate some of the programs from around this area, the overall competition level goes up, you then are able to compete against similar types of clubs from Knoxville, from Nashville, Atlanta, wherever. To use an old phrase, the rising tide lifts all ships, is, is kind of the, the thinking that goes behind that. I think it's worked well. Uh, I think, I think it's a good thing for the city of East Ridge, and I, I, it would be, and I know there are some concerns, too, about the exclusivity agreement, but, you know, if the Tennessee Titans came down and said, hey, we want to use Camp Jordan for player development, I'm not going to tell them no, in the hope that the Atlanta Falcons will approach us to do the same thing. Yeah, I'm not, I'm not going to do that. I, I'm going to take the bird in hand versus the two in bush. Uh, that's, I think I...
What, 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 what? I was going to just respond to his point real quickly about merging organizations. This past, or, uh, two weekends ago, we had a U fifteen girls team go to Indianapolis and compete in a nationwide tournament and finished second in the tournament, beating the state champion from Minnesota, uh, beating a top team out of Ohio, and so, to, it is accomplishing its goals of merging our organizations to form one strong, uh, team to come out of this area. And Camp Jordan is the home of our club. We do have almost, you know, eighty to ninety percent of our participants practicing on a regular basis, but Five Fields actually is not large enough to accomplish every, whatever three or four parts of Camp Jordan, but it is the bulk that ours love practicing at Camp Jordan.
I see.
One question, uh...
Just a second.
I understand now, you correct me if I'm wrong, I'm just... But, it used to be twelve months. Uh, you dropped it down to ten, but you're still paying the same amount as you was when you had twelve months.
Sure.
Okay.
We picked up seven thousand more dollars, roughly, so it's going to be between sixty-seven hundred and seven thousand more dollars on the contract this year over last year.
That's what I'm saying.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, say that again?
We have now gone from twelve months to ten months, so they're going to be paying us the fifty-five thousand for ten months, where last year, they paid it to us for twelve months, but due to the fact that the Christmas lights of lights had to be in there for two months, and we had to send them off somewhere else, they didn't pay us for two months of the contract, because they couldn't use the fields. And we brought that to the council, we had an agreement on that, and that's what we did. Now, moving forward, we're not doing that. We're keeping it the same amount of money, but they've still got to go somewhere else for those two months. Last year, they used the money that we allowed them to get out of, so to speak, to pay for the outdoor turf fields, uh, at places around here to practice. This year, it'll be a ten-month deal, and every year going forward, it'll be a ten-month deal, so we're actually getting sixty-seven hundred more dollars a year out of this than we were, as opposed to the ten-month deal. Does that make sense?
Yeah. Well?
We're paying them a hundred and thirty-three dollars a day, per field, no, per fine.
You what now?
They're paying us a hundred and thirty-three dollars a day for five fields.
They're paying us that?
That's what I'm asking you.
Well, you've done the numbers on that.
I've done the numbers.
Yeah, I haven't done the numbers on that.
So, you're saying that they're paying us forty thousand dollars for ten months, and...
And they have fifteen...
And last year, they went somewhere else for two months?
Yes.
Well, won't they just stay in East Ridge and, you know, forty thousand dollars for ten months, that's comes up to the forty thousand dollars? Won't they just pay us an additional eight thousand and for, for the other two months rather than going somewhere else?
That question be to them.
Because your fields are going to typically be closed quite a bit during December and January, number one, and number two, if they are open, we're going to do more damage to them during those months, and it's going to cost you more to, to keep the, for the upkeep, and replacing and overseeding and things like that, because the bulk of your damage to fields is done during, during the non-growing season, especially December and January, where you're going to frost, and you have other issues that you have to consider.
And you stay on the fields pretty much in July as well?
That's correct.
Turf, turf fields would...
Turf fields would be great, and even turf fields out here would...
Would make a difference, I forgot there.
I won't be on council. No, uh, would you be agreeable to deleting paragraph two, A, three, about the rent offset? Would you be agreeable to doing that?
Uh, I'd be agreeable to doing the rent offset, I think there needs to be some sort of provision to where...
If, how about fifty dollars a day? That's your late fee, if you pay late.
Again, as long as, I think there, there's no issues, and there have been no issues, I don't mind the rent off, the rent offset declining or being struck, I think there just needs to be some protection for us that we're able to use the fields on a regular basis as well, uh, because we do schedule a lot of games, a lot of practices, those sorts of things out of the park. Um, we're there every weekend during our play, playing season, we're there five days a week during the practice season, uh, so I think it's important that we make sure we're able to practice and play... So, I think it's important that we make sure we're able to practice and play games on a regular basis.
So, what do you think is a fair and equitable, considering that for a late payment, you have to pay fifty dollars a day, what do you think is a fair and equitable rent offset?
I mean, I, I'm fine with maybe, the fifty dollars a day is fine because again, there has been no issues between stump and, I don't have problems with that.
I'll take the fifty dollars of that thing.
How about this? I know there's any expenditures like here, my budget, if there is no select soccer expenditures.
Right, we don't have any select soccer expenditures.
So, ten thousand dollars will not be coming out of the select soccer expenditures. Get out of the line more?
No, no, they're bound, they're bound to the line more.
Okay. Forty thousand dollars is even going into revenue?
I need, Ms. Diane, I need to answer that question.
Yes. Yeah, it'll be, it's going to be revenue just like it is in this, this year and then the amount of money that they've spent, that they're saying they're going to spend in addition would just be added to field maintenance that we have, our regular line item is how we do it.
Select soccer, according to this sheet here, on the revenues, budget of forty-eight thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars this year. And as of this five year, we've only collected twenty-six thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven thousand.
Yes, they had two months, they did not pay that.
That's all in, on the two months.
We lowered it, we lowered it to the forty-eight thousand. We normally get their checks around first of the month, so there'll be some more coming in.
They've never been like.
They're not like, in fact, they, they hang me on.
They were ahead here.
I'd like to have, I'd like it to be six, six thousand, six hundred and sixty-six dollars.
I think it was three thousand, three hundred and thirty-three, so payments would be that time to take.
Right, sitting, all right. So, then we need to add that, it's twenty-six thousand, two thousand.
Call for those, those checks.
I don't like the five year lease, I'm just, I don't like the shit that people have in the morning.
I'd say it's, the drop the five year lease, which I will be here five years, but it's okay, but when we drop your five year lease, that's going to give them, somebody else a chance, no call thing for the town to give them a chance to be able to undermine us. If they're determined out of them, then we're going to lose it all.
Is that you?
It's losing. That's the number, if we drop the lease down, okay? Say, how many of you said drop?
I'd say we'll go back to two years.
We go two years lease, somebody that's got it behind us, offer a better deal, then we're going to lose.
No, they, no, they have had that chance through the, they go over on Access Road and Readout out here, they keep coming back to East Ridge.
But they might change their mind for then.
Well, that's, that's fine, man.
Access Road has, Access Road has four fields.
We're dealing, we know that, yes.
So, we had a motion in a second before all the discussion period. It sounds like, yeah, motion to amend, basically from Mr. Gravett, we'll deal with amendment separately here, but you, you asked for the offset provision.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Let me find that again.
And that don't mean we're selling a soccer field or indoor soccer anymore.
No, sir, no, sir, no, sir.
No room going around.
No, sir, no, sir, it's.
No, I'm going to.
We own indoor, we own indoor soccer. Our soccer numbers are higher than they've been. Diane, I think's got the record of all that.
Two A three.
The motion.
Motion to amend two, paragraph two A three, rent offset to reduce it. Third, second line, city shall pay five hundred dollars per day to CFCA, amend that to fifty dollars per day to CFCA.
Will you agree to park it off altogether?
Yeah, I think going back to the, going back to the reason it was five hundred dollars was because if we bring the additional field six, seven, eight, and nine, the stadium field being field nine, we pay the city five hundred dollars per day for those four fields if we use those as well.
We'll still keep that.
All right, that's, I'm fine, I'm just explaining why it's five hundred dollars to me, okay?
So, we have a motion to amend, so that this reads fifty dollars a day instead of five hundred. Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call on the amendment.
Pastor Gravett?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Manning?
Yes.
Councilmember Stoll?
Yes.
Fairly.
Yes. Okay, and Mr. Cagle, would you?
I'd like to, uh, if they'd be willing to negotiate going back to five years or two years.
No, sir, we have a, we have, well, we have a motion.
And maybe one for five years.
Right. We've heard, obviously, the Tennessee Football Club would rather not do that, but you can still make a motion to.
They know that I'm good, so I don't know how I vote, so.
Okay.
I'd take my motion back.
Okay. All right. Sorry, I'm making a note here so that when we, we'll have to read the caption as amended. We, I know what I'm saying. All right, any other proposed amendments? Here none. So, the motion in a second is to adopt resolution twenty-five sixty-one with the amendment that in section two A three, the rent offset, the dollar amount paid per day is reduced from five hundred dollars to fifty dollars. And again, we have a motion and a second already to adopt this resolution, we've amended it. Roll call please.
Did he, what would do that? Did he agree to that?
Yes.
Okay.
Roll call please.
Pastor Gravett?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
No.
Councilmember Manning?
Yes.
Councilmember Stoll?
Yes.
Fairly.
Yes. Thank you, gentlemen. Item D, approval to bid out collection services for the court.
Motion.
I.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
I may be missing it. Oh, it's his to bid it out, I'm sorry.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve. We talked about, I don't know if it was the last time or before last, but there's a need to do this because the company that had been doing it no longer does it.
Yes, sir.
I think one of their principles passed away, unfortunately.
Yes, sir, and Court Clerk, she was unable to be here tonight, she had something come up, but, you know, she said that they, you know, they're not able to spend enough time on it to do it themselves. I know that someone asked, I can't remember if it was Council Cagle or Iceman, asked how much it was when we first started, I went back and pulled on our paperwork, and when we originally chose to send it out, the actual accounts receivable, the link report files at that time was one point nine million dollars, of which one point seven we were not able to turn over because of issues, so we only turned over less than two hundred thousand. They had not been able to collect very much of that, but Court Clerk feels like they can be able to collect this and been able to gather more information with the conversion and stuff that they've had going on.
I think part of the issue with not being able to turn over all of that out was some of those stretched far back in time, far back.
Way back in the early days.
And the court is really busy, like they're, they're lined up on Tuesday nights.
Okay, so we do have a motion and a second to bid this out. Roll call please.
Pastor Gravett?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Manning?
Yes.
Councilmember Stoll?
Yes.
Fairly.
Yes. Item D, approval to amend the minutes of the October fifteenth, twenty fifteen work session.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Roll call please.
Pastor Gravett?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Manning?
Yes.
Councilmember Stoll?
Yes.
Fairly.
Yes. As a note of clarification on that, the, they will be amended to reflect what is captured in video and it should be word for word.
Yes, my recommendation is that the minutes from the agenda session, that October fifteenth, be transcribed word for word from the recorded video and audio as it relates to the discussion that took place with open air lines.
Thank you, sir. Item F, remember this is the one that we actually moved forward in regard to the cell I think it would be proven appropriate for the council to, to tell Commissioner Boyd to, that the county could proceed doing the things they need to do with the understanding that ultimately they will have to come back to this council for a use on review permit. And it will, should not have any bearing on the decision to grant that use on review permit, but if the city had, the city council has a recommendation or a suggestion on how to use those funds, we can certainly do that. And we will entertain a motion, do that effect.
Make a motion.
Okay, and the recommendation would be to allow the funds, or our, our recommendation, our suggestion would be to allow those funds to be used for construction of the new football stadium. So, the, the motion is to, I hesitate to say direct, but to, to request, thank you, sir, request that Commissioner Boyd and the county commission proceed with taking care of the items, the, and going through the process that they would normally have to go through on this issue with the understanding that it has to come back to the council for a use on review permit at the, at the last stage and that, you know, it, it should not have any bearing on our decision to grant that use on review, but this council's recommendation, suggestion would be that, or preference, if you want to call it that, would be to have those funds in some way used to rebuild the football stadium. Nice link the.
Yes, right wing.
Motion. All right, we have a motion and a second, roll call please.
Pastor Gravett?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Manning?
Yes.
Councilmember Stoll?
Yes.
Fairly.
Yes. That's all we have on the agenda tonight. Thank you all for being here. Again, senior day at East Ridge High School tomorrow. Also, of course, we have city manager interviews tomorrow night and Saturday night. We will see you then, five thirty, both nights.